It's 6:00 PM, so let's go ahead and get started. Welcome everybody to the Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024, meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For minutes' purposes, please note Commissioners present are Wade, Hench, Townsend, Craig, and Elliott. Commissioner Quellhorst has a prearranged absence. Item number three on the agenda is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If there's anybody in the meeting tonight who would like to address the commission about an item not on the agenda, now is the opportunity. Just come forth up to the podium there. Is there anybody who'd like to address the commission? Seeing no rush to the podium, we'll go on to number four. Case number SUB-23-0009. The location is 1310 Cedar Street. This is an application for a combined preliminary and final plat of Babs First Edition, a 3.74-acre subdivision containing two residential lots and two outlots to accommodate two single-family homes. Ann.
Thank you, Chair. As you mentioned, this is a combined prelim and final plat to accommodate one new home. I'll show you an aerial of the site here. This is 1310 Cedar Street. To the north is Oakland Cemetery. To the east is Hickory Hill Park. Here's the zoning map. The property is zoned RS5, and there is a lot of city land around this property. Reno Street Park to the west, and then Oakland Cemetery, and the Hickory Hill Park are all zoned public, but most of the area is zoned a single-family residential. In terms of background, 1310 Cedar Street is a historically significant site. There's a Greek Revival home that's on the property now, which will remain as part of this subdivision. This site has never been subdivided, and the request is to create one new residential lot for one new single-family home. And again, the existing home would remain at 1310 Cedar. Here is the combined preliminary and final plat. It's 3.74 acres. There's two outlots and two residential lots. The existing home is located here on what will become Lot 2. It's about two acres. This is Lot 1, where the new single-family home will go, which is one acres. And then we have two outlots. Outlet A will be dedicated to the city of Iowa City, and Outlet B will remain under current ownership and be private open space, not to be developed. Both lots will be accessed from Cedar Street here. There's existing water and sanitary sewer service in this area. There is not a sidewalk, though, so a sidewalk, a five-foot sidewalk, will need to be installed as part of this request. This is an infill development, which is encouraged by goals and policies in our comprehensive plan, which encourage development in areas that already have infrastructure and services, which is the case for this proposal. In terms of environmentally sensitive areas, the proposed subdivision is exempt from our sensitive areas ordinance. Since they are only proposing to build one single-family home, and they're disturbing less than 20,000 square feet, the sensitive areas ordinance does not apply. In terms of neighborhood open space, the applicant is required to either dedicate land or provide a fee in lieu to satisfy our neighborhood open space requirement, and they have opted to dedicate Outlet A to the city of Iowa City for an extension of Oakland Cemetery, which meets the neighborhood open space requirements. Stormwater management is going to be provided on-site through a detention basin, which is shown on the plat, and our public works staff has reviewed their stormwater management We have received one piece of correspondence in support of the subdivision, which was provided to the commission. And that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending approval of SUB-23-009, an application submitted by Barbell Anderson for a combined preliminary and final plat of Babs First Edition, a 3.74-acre subdivision containing two residential lots and two outlots located at 1310 Cedar Street. Just in terms of next steps, this will be going to City Council on April 16th. So I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Any questions for members of the Commission of Staff on this application?
I have a question. Could you go back to the map that shows the... Yeah, that one. I have two things. The detention basement, basin easement looks like it's right in the middle of this lot, where I assume they're going to build a house. I don't quite understand the placement of that compared to where... I mean, where's the house going to be?
Yeah, you could... That may be a question for the applicant's engineer, but it is a one-acre lot. It's a pretty large lot. And in addition to that, they wanted to limit their impacts to less than 20,000 square feet, so as not to trigger the sensitive areas ordinance. So the development of the home, the driveway, and the detention basin is all kind of one area.
Okay. And then Outlet B, again, I'm curious about the outlets. You know, we see them here. We're going to see them in the next thing that we look at. So it's just a piece of property that is owned by the owners, and it just sits there forever?
Yeah, this was actually requested by staff to create this outlet. The request was to do a one-acre lot for the development of the new home, and that would have... Without the outlet, it would have created Lot 2 as a flag lot. So to avoid this flag lot, but to allow the one-acre Lot 1, we requested that outlet be created as private open space, not to be developed, to comply with our subdivision regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Two pretty basic questions. I realize it's under 20,000 square feet, so sensitive areas ordinance doesn't apply. Are there any sensitive slopes or wooded areas on this parcel?
You know, I don't think... Well, the acre... This lot is only... The developable lot is less than a two-acre woodland, and I don't think there's any significant slopes on it either.
And just for the public's edification, why in this instance is there both a preliminary and a final plat when usually those are split in two?
Yeah, we opted to combine them to make the process more streamlined for the applicant since this is a very small area. There is really no infrastructure besides the sidewalk. There's no streets. And again, it's just one single-family... It's two single-family lots, but for one home.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from members of the Commission?
I just got one question. Will this be the only area with a sidewalk on that side of the street? I don't think Hickory Hill does or the other houses.
No, they don't. There is a new home, I think, going in further east, which will require a new sidewalk, but eventually, over time, hopefully, it all connects.
No further questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll start off first with the applicant or the applicant's representative, and then we'll, after that, give an opportunity for anyone to speak. Please remember that all speakers, other than the applicant or the applicant's representative, are restricted to five minutes. So whoever wants to speak, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tom Anthony. I'm the one that prepared the plat with the cooperation of staff and the applicants and the attorneys and everybody else who gets wrapped up in these kind of things. If I could, I would address the one question about the stormwater management. We started off hoping we could do rain gardens to alleviate most of the, or if not all of the runoff, and just get it at that level, which satisfied the stormwater management ordinance also. It turned out mathematically, there was not really enough storage available in a rain garden, so we're actually combining the two. We're going to make a rain garden inside the detention basin, and it's close to the house, so it's actually going to be part of their backyard gardening area, and still maintain the stormwater storage facility at the same time. So it might be kind of a new innovative way to do that, but with our small area, like she said, we don't have much to work with, so we squeezed it all in. And the drainage area itself is quite small. It goes up to 1310 a little bit, but then the contours kind of drain away a little bit, so we're only catching water from the rooftops and the driveway and the yard. So we were able to get that to fit that small area. So we're hoping that works out great. We'll do an ASBIL for it when it's all done, as part of the requirement, to see how it came out. But they'll get to landscape it and do... To put the plantings in there that are going to work for rain garden and also storage. Okay?
Okay.
Were there any other questions that I should address?
Any other questions for Tom?
Kudos for doing something with the detention basin. As everybody that follows this is aware, a lot of times it'll just become kind of a clustered mess because they're not maintained.
They're an eyesore, basically.
And so doing something innovative like this, I sincerely appreciate that.
From an engineering perspective, we call them teacup detention because it's so small, but mathematically, normally they're measured in acre-feet. These are measured in acred inches, so it's very small, but it does its job. There's one out at the Moose Lodge, right in their front yard, that's about the size of this area. And there are other ones around, but they're so hard to see that you don't even know if they're working, but they do. Every little bit helps.
All right. Thank you very much.
The owners are here, too, if you want to ask them any questions, okay?
All right. Do the owners wish to speak? There's no obligation to, if you don't want to.
Sir, I'll just write my name down here.
I want to tell you about the... Okay. My name is Will McBride. I live at 419 Pleasant Street. Myself and my husband, Will McBride, back here, and this is our neighbor, Babs Anderson. So the property, original property, is Babs's, and we've been neighbors for five years. We love our home. It's an older home. We now have a toddler and a baby, a second baby, on the way, and we have determined that our house isn't a great fit for our growing family, and so we wanted to get something that's a better fit, but we love our neighborhood, and we love being close to the parks. We love being able to walk downtown, but there's a lot of serenity that exists in our little street with all the wildlife, and we thought, you know, we don't want to lose that. Renovating our house wasn't something that was going to be real viable, and so we talked to Babs about it, and her situation is such that she has been in the house for quite some time, and financially, it's become a burden, and this is going to be a way to help her stay in her home, and she can remain our neighbor. And also, she had been approached by other people to severely, you know, significantly develop this land, and that was something that neither she nor any of us wanted to see happen because it is very special. So our intention is very, very pure, very honest. We have a dream home we want to build, nothing too over the top, but something that'll work for us. We're both healthcare providers. We're rooted in the family... In the community. Our families live here, so we're planning to make this our forever home. So that's... Just wanted to give you a little context as to what's going on. We're not a corporation or trying to do anything sinister. Just we love Iowa City through and through, and the spot is special, and we don't take that for granted, and we'd be very grateful, so we appreciate your consideration.
Was it lieu?
Uh, lieu.
Okay. I just didn't... Wasn't sure I caught your first name.
Oh, my name, Will.
Will, see?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Definitely didn't catch it.
Yeah.
I thought you said lieu, and I'm like...
Yeah, Will McBride.
Okay, Will. And thank you for that detention area with that rain garden.
Yeah.
That's...
Yeah, we'll try to make it something unique and special, even though, you know, it'll be functional at the same time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the Commission on this application? Second call?
Can I say a few words?
Yep. Just remember, we have five minutes for each person, and so sign in, and then...
Sort of, then. Or longer.
Okay. And when you get close, you need to sign in, and then you'll need to state your name into the microphone and speak into the microphone, please. Yeah, those are... Yeah. Sometimes the easiest way is just grab it and hold it, because otherwise it just takes off on you.
1310 Cedar Street.
Just go ahead and hold the microphone in front... Yeah, just like that.
I always hold my stupid smartphone too close.
Your name, ma'am?
I... This better?
Yeah, that's good.
Or too loud?
No, you're fine.
I'm usually very loud, but better loud than not audible. My husband, Roger...
And your name, ma'am?
My name is actually Barbel Anderson, but everybody calls me Babs because B-A-U-M-L-O-U-T that can't even be written on a computer or typewriter. It's got two dots on it, and so everybody calls me Babs.
All righty.
And so that is also... The spelling would be Babs, B-A-B-S apostrophe S's Edition. And the Babs's Edition is actually the location where when Roger and I, when actually Tom and Isabel Turner owned 1310 Cedar Street, which is also the original Rose Hill. The inside log cabin was Captain Frederick Macy Irish, who moved there when there was no Iowa City, and there was not even a state of Iowa. It was the territory of Iowa that was opened up for settlement, and the capital was Burlington, way in the south. Captain Irish, Chauncey Swan, John Ronalds, and the last person I can never remember, they decided Burlington is too far south. Iowa City is a good place to have the new capital of the then-territory of Iowa. And then later on, I guess it... I don't know when. I was actually born and raised in Germany, and I never imagined that I would, in my life, ever end up here. But I really love, first of all, America. I love Iowa City. I love Iowa. And when Roger and I, we actually built a house 1421 Cedar Street, and his previous house was on Rundle Street, which was in the floodplain, and he said, "And we needed to have a bigger house." And he said, "I'll never live anywhere in the floodplain again." And so somebody told us about Cedar Street and the Hickory Hill Park. Actually, Captain Irish was very wise, because this is probably the highest location. When we, at night, when all... In the wintertime, when all the trees have lost their leaves, we can actually see the lights of the Sikoma Mall. When downtown was flooded, there wasn't a drop of water on the street, Cedar Street. And actually, the backside bordering, and to start with, I... Roger wanted the land because he wanted to actually buy a farm or live on a farm, and I said, "I'm a city girl. I lived in Munich, Germany, actually the best city in the world, and the best beer, too." Sorry. But so we found the lot and built a house down the street at 1421 Cedar, but when the owners before us were Tom and Isabel Turner. Now Isabel Turner, she was very well-known to the city of Iowa City. And when they passed away, ultimately Tom passed away, then this whole property came up for sale, and I... It was actually auction at First National Bank, and the auctioneer was... Oh, gosh, the name I can't... Mearden Suppledowner and Hayes, Bill Mearden. And so it was there, and I said, "I'm so nervous, I don't want to anything to do with the auctioneer..." Auctioning. And my husband did. There were five people who were invited to the final auction. And I said, later on, when we actually were able to buy the property, then I said, "I do not understand what... How much is one acre?" Because in Germany, we count like hectares, meters, centimeters, millimeters. He said, "Okay." We go to the football game at Kinnick Stadium. Three and three-quarter acres around the house is like three and three-quarter football field, so I could understand that part. But then the city actually, at one point, Roger became very sick, and he could not do the farming or his gardening, whatever. He was a scientist, and his gardening and farming was like the way he felt like it. And then when we had bought the property, Mr. Trueblood was Parks and Recreation, and he wrote, had written us a letter that they wanted to buy one acre to add to Oakland Cemetery. And at that time, Roger said, "Well, I wanted to have the land. I didn't want to sell it." But now, after Roger was not able to help out anymore, then I decided I will sell one acre to Oakland Cemetery, but then that somehow didn't work out. And then ultimately, when my two neighbors, wonderful neighbors, approached me, I said, "Yes, absolutely. I want to do it." And but I also, the part adjoining this Oakland Cemetery is called the Evergreen Garden. There are many different varieties of evergreens, and actually, the whole 1310 Cedar Street lot is on the tree walk. There's actually a map from the city where people can walk around the area, and there were many, many beautiful... I'd never seen a buckeye tree, and I said, "What's a buckeye?" I couldn't imagine. But we do still have a buckeye tree there. We have got bald cypress. We've got many, many beautiful, unusual trees. So ultimately, when we now worked out that my wonderful neighbors are going to buy the one acre, it'll be so great for their children to be able to run and have a big place where they can play football or baseball or soccer. And at the same time, because I love Iowa City so much, I never wanted to live in Los Angeles, which there was a chance at one point, no, 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 no. Iowa City is much, much better. But I still wanted to give a piece of that Evergreen Garden to the cemetery, because eventually I will be buried somewhere, and that is where I would like to be buried. And because the whole area, it's so beautiful. And also, one thing I do not understand about this runoff thing, the land actually is the highest where the house is built. And I actually... Have you ever seen the house? Or I have got a picture in my handbag, if anybody would like to see it. It is the highest point, and there's actually also a map from the city that gives the elevation. And there was actually outside of, in front of the house, a little tree which ultimately died, but that was, in fact, the totally highest point from that whole area. And towards the backside, there's something what we call a ravine. And where the ravine is, we were told there was actually an original well. And when Captain Irish, when they built the log cabin, and they lived there, and actually American Indians, they used to come and walk across or by the side of the cabin, go to the well and fetch their water there. And I actually found the place. It's sort of like the way wells are in old days. They are sort of a round thing, and... But from that point, it's like, we call it the ravine, and the low area, it goes all the way to Ralston Creek. So whatever rainfall or whatever water goes, that goes away. We never... When we have a really big storm, Corville got flooded, we couldn't even go there. Downtown Iowa City, well, we lost Hancher. And so we never had any flooding, and so that is what I consider the runoff. There is really... I mean, there's never going to be any... I mean, we are not going to drop, you know, gazillion gallons of water, neither one will.
Babs, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Yes, I think, but you get the idea, maybe.
Yep. That's a question for your engineer. They'll be able to explain to you about that.
But the part of the Evergreen Garden, I am donating it. The city originally wanted to buy one acre, but I am...
Well, thank you very much.
I love Iowa City so much, and they need more land for the cemetery, because apparently part of the park area that they took from the Hickory Hill Park, it's not usable for graves anymore because it is too steep. And so they will have some graves that they can actually make up for there.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Babs. I appreciate it.
And thank you for your consideration.
You betcha. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion?
Move to approve.
We got a motion by...
Second.
We have a motion by Elliott and a second by Craig. Hearing no discussion, we'll call the question. All those in favor of approving this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved. One, two, three, four, five to zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is case number SUB-23-0011. The location is north of North Gate Drive and east of North Dodge Street/Highway 1. This is an application for a combined preliminary and final plat for Highlander Development 4th Edition, a 39.96-acre subdivision containing one lot and three outlots to create one developable 2.22-acre commercial lot. Ann.
Thank you, Chair. This is another combined preliminary and final plat for an area off of North Gate. This is a commercial subdivision. Here's an aerial of the site. As you can see, it's north of North Gate Drive, east of North Dodge Street. Here's the existing zoning map. It's currently zoned CO1. The area to the east and west is an ID zone, and most of that is under agricultural operation, and then the existing commercial areas to the south, which is also zoned CO1. In terms of background, this land was annexed in the late '60s, early '70s. In 2015, it was rezoned to CO1, and then in 2016, the City Council actually approved a plat for this area, Highlander Development 4th Edition Part 1, which you can see here on the right. So this is the plat that currently exists for this area. There are 10 commercial lots. And here's the outlet for stormwater management, and the plat also shows the extension of North Gate Drive and some east-west streets in here for connectivity. At this time, no improvements have been made to build this area, no street infrastructure, utility infrastructure, and so the landowners would like to re-subdivide this land to just create one commercial lot, one buildable commercial lot, and one outlet for stormwater management, and then two outlots reserved for future development. So here is the proposed plat. It's 39.96 acres. Again, it's one buildable commercial lot, which is located here. The outlet for stormwater management is in the same location that was originally approved. The lots that were created with the last plat, which are shown here, would be going away, as would all of this right of way. So there are two outlets for future development, which are located here, and then another one here. It's about 31 acres. And then, I guess, lastly, there is no sidewalk in this area, so a sidewalk would need to be installed as part of any development in this area. The comprehensive plan identifies this as appropriate for Office Research Development Center, which aligns with the rezoning, which happened in 2015 to CO1. But again, at this time, with the decline in the need for office space and commercial office uses, the applicant and the landowner has... office uses, the applicant and the landowner has would like to replat this to remove most of those commercial lots. There are no environmentally sensitive areas in the plat, and the areas, the two outlots that are 31 acres, would need another subdivision for development to occur in those areas. Stormwater management, again, is being provided by Outlot A, and Public Works is working with the owner to ensure adequate stormwater management is provided for any development on Lot 1. In terms of correspondence, we have received one email with some concerns regarding the fact that North Gate dead ends, it's one way in and one way out. There's concerns about stormwater management, the building style of any new development, and the height. That correspondence was forwarded to the commission. Staff recommends approval of SUB 23-0011, an application submitted by North Gate Land LLC for a combined preliminary and final plat of Highlander Development 5th Edition, a 39.96-acre subdivision containing one commercial lot, one outlot for stormwater management, and two outlots reserved for future development. In terms of next steps, after the commission makes a recommendation, it'll go to city council. I'll turn it back to the chair.
All right. Thank you, Ann. Are there any questions for staff, by commission members?
I noticed on the original, there was an extension for Oakdale Boulevard.
Yeah.
Is that still part of this?
No, that would be vacated.
So they could build on that land?
There, with this, the plat that approved included right-of-way for an Oakdale extension, but with the replat, which is you're considering tonight, that right-of-way would be vacated, and all of this would just be an outlot for future development. So, let me go to the next one. So, yeah, there would be no right-of-way in this area here. It would all be outlot for future development, which wouldn't allow any development unless it was subdivided at a future date.
Is that no longer planned to have the Oakdale go through?
It is a plan to go through. So whenever this land gets subdivided in the future for development, it would need to accommodate the Oakdale extension.
And that would allow for another exit entrance option?
Yeah. I mean, I think eventually, we would like some connection back to North Dodge.
It's down the road, but there is, in the future, at some point, there is an option for another exit entrance there.
Yeah, we would like to see, I don't know if this is the best map, but eventually, a connection back to North Dodge, but that's, who knows when that would happen, and it kind of depends on when the land is developed.
Because right now, there is no, there's no place to put another exit or entrance that I can figure, that I could see.
Yeah, it's.
You can't go to your, I can't, my, you can't go to the east. I mean, it's surrounded by the interstate and the highway and cornfields.
Yeah.
I'm not following why you don't keep that Oakdale Boulevard. I don't know what, I don't have the correct terms, but.
Yeah, the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, when this was originally platted, they had proposed development all the way to the north end of the property.
Right.
Oakdale will eventually come through here at some point, but we don't know the exact alignment. And since this area has to be re-subdivided for development to occur, we have the ability to get that right-of-way at that future time, when it's no longer an outlot reserved for future development, when someone is asking to develop that site, and they go through the subdivision process, and then they would need to dedicate right-of-way.
Okay.
Any more questions?
I got another question. So essentially, it's like de-scoping what was originally approved to now just a single lot, and then the outlots. Is it because of the timeline between the two that they have to replat this or re-request it? Or like, why do they have to re-subdivide now versus just following the existing, unless there's a change in the lot? I think Lot 1 was the same between both.
Yeah, I think that the big difference is the outlot reserved for future development, which is a different boundary than what was originally platted. And I think their intent is to sell, is to sell the land.
Just let it off.
Yeah. But again, it can't, it wouldn't be able to be developed.
Right.
With the original one, there were certain infrastructure installation requirements.
Okay.
So this kind of backs away from those obligations.
Okay. That makes sense. Thanks.
Do we have any idea what's going to go into those units?
No. And it's just one, it's just the one lot.
Okay. And given the zoning, if it's changed, how high a building could go there?
It's 25 feet, unless it's a hospital use, which has, which allows up to 65 feet.
Any more questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Now, if the applicant or the applicant's representative come forward.
I'm not as short as Babs, so hopefully we'll be good with this one. My name is Gina Landau. I'm with Navigate Homes, representing the North Gate Land. So I guess I'll let you know, the reason for doing this is mainly because there is no longer need, especially in this area, but in general, in the environment that we live in, post-COVID, for office parks, commercial areas, and, you know, any of this going on. I don't know the number of buildings out there that are vacant, but I know that there's several. So as far as building a bunch more lots up there, there's already empty buildings. There's just no reason for it. The reason why after, from what I understand, I've only been with Navigate Homes for about six months, but there's been several people that have been there for quite a while have explained to me, in 2016, when that fourth addition was approved, numbers were run, and it just wasn't working as far as to put a street in and do all the infrastructure. So they kind of pulled back. Come to find out, that was probably good after what happened in 2020, because then we'd have all of the rest of those lots sitting empty, or buildings sitting empty. So there's no, the real reason for this is so we can sell this land off, and I shouldn't say convert it back to farmland, because it has remained farmland this entire time, the whole time, since the early 1900s, it's been farmed. Even though Navigate Homes owns it, we've had the same tenant farmer farming it for years and years and years. So the plan is hopefully to sell off to neighbors, and the same farmer is going to farm it. We're just going to keep that one commercial lot, and there's no plans for that commercial lot. Of course, we would have to, at site plan time, if we would build, or if anyone else, excuse me, would build, we would have to conform to the requirements for the city of Iowa City. So that's kind of the impetus for this. Also, since I wasn't with Navigate Homes, I don't know how this was done when Highlander first was approved, and that was in the early 2000s. Apparently, they considered a second access through one of the parking lots. I've read that in the subdividers agreement. I don't quite know how, because that wouldn't fly with code right now, obviously. So I understand the access and the two access that you guys are talking about, but it was approved, and it's existed that way since early 2000. But yes, eventually, the plan would be to connect and have connectivity and two accesses. And then also, with the Oakdale Boulevard extension, I did receive from the city of Iowa City engineering document, or engineering department, they had given me an Oakdale, it goes this way and cuts through, but they actually said to me that that's not even going to be the alignment. And let me see. I also note that we currently have an update to the alignment study included in our CIP. What does CIP mean?
Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you. CIP for 2025. So I think that there is a plan that the city is working on for 2025. And as Ann mentioned, anyone wanting to subdivide those two outlots up there would have to follow that plan and dedicate that right-of-way for future Oakdale Boulevard. At this time, we don't have to, but anyone wanting to would follow that.
All right. Thanks, Gina.
Yeah. If you have any questions, I feel like I addressed kind of your questions, but, okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the commission on this application?
My name is Jerry Foal. I'm a partner in Liberty Growth. We own Lot 6 in the older development. I think a can of worms is going to be opened real soon. I don't know if this will affect that, but we've owned that lot and built it for Shivehattery, built a building for Shivehattery. They moved out, moved across the street. We got a new tenant after a couple of years of vacancy, and now it's vacant again. The people we had in there left because of COVID. And we've had two showing, something like that. Anyway, we've owned the lot for 28 years. Most of the assoc, let me explain. Most of the people out there didn't know an association had been formed for that group of lots. And when they did, when Southgate did that plat that you're now going to get rid of, all of a sudden, they want an association meeting. Well, that was 22 years after we bought our lot, 2020 to 22 years, something like that. We had a meeting of all the landowners up there to see about forming this association, because all of a sudden, Southgate and was saying, "We had to fix the creek along, behind our lot, behind the music school, behind the dental school. We had to do a bunch of work on that." It was going to cost $120,000, or I don't remember the exact numbers. Anyway, we had multiple meetings about that, and only about, less than half of the people would even show up to the meetings. We hired counsel to give us advice, should we do this, should we do that, should we do that? And we decided that we'd let by square footage ownership be a percentage of the legal fees to pay the lawyer. Okay? Less than half of the owners on that property contributed to the legal fees. I've called several of the owners about this situation. Not this situation, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit. We got this letter about this change that you're addressing tonight last week. Exactly one month before that, we got a letter from the city saying, "We, as landowners up there, have to fix that creek." Well, we let that association go away, because nobody had any interest. We were footing the legal bills, none of the other ones would, all of which had plenty of money to pay. Mercy Hospital's an owner up there. They didn't pay any. They didn't, probably didn't have the money to pay it at that time. Anyway, we're pretty unhappy about how Southgate has dealt with this, that it was 22 years from the time, most of us didn't even know there was an association supposed to be formed. It formed in 95, and the meeting was, the first meeting was in 17, I think, that they called for, because they wanted us to fix it. Well, they wanted us to fix it, so they didn't have to do it, because that land back there wasn't part of that, even though all their water would flow into that creek. All the water that way flows into that creek. We think, we think Southgate, I hate to cast aspersions upon them, but we think they should be responsible for doing most of that creek work. We didn't even know about it. So I really would like to see something addressed about that issue before this plat is approved, because they're not part of that association. Southgate said that they would pay for a bunch of the legal fees and pay for some amount of any repair we did as an association. They didn't even pay for all their share of the legal fees. So we have issues. I mean, we're gonna, we got a letter from the city a month, a month and a half ago about, "We need to fix that creek." Okay, I'm not going to enter into a contract myself, or my group, to fix that creek, when I know half the people in that, that are theoretically responsible for it, won't pay for it. I would have to go to court to get those people to pay, I'm pretty sure. I mean, they wouldn't pay for a lawyer who used to be the mayor of Iowa City. They wouldn't pay his fees, so I don't know how the city is going to deal with our issue of that creek, because all the land on the other side of the creek isn't responsible whatsoever for that, that flood management, waste, you know, street water management plan, not at all. And there were plenty, there were several buildings, big ones, that were exempt from being part of that association from the get-go, who are dumping water into that creek. So something's got to happen. I mean, it's going to be send money, guns, and lawyers, I'm afraid, because I'm not going to enter a contract to fix that. And they're saying it has to be done by July 1st. Well, okay, what entity is going to do it? It does, the association doesn't exist anymore, because nobody wanted to do it. We were willing to talk about it, but nobody showed up. So anyway, any questions? I know I'm rambling.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the commission on this application? Second call for anybody else to address the commission. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Elliot. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Townsend. Discussion. Ann, does this, what Jerry brought up about this creek, does that involve any of the land involved in this application?
Yeah, it does. Lot 1, Lot 1 would need to provide stormwater management or meet our requirements in some way before they were able to develop.
And has that stormwater management plan been approved by the city engineer?
It's, the stormwater management area is the existing, sorry, let me share the screen. So this is the stormwater management area that was approved with the fourth addition. And the, I guess the letter that he's referring to is a letter that our public works staff sent, because the facility isn't functioning property. The existing stormwater management facility is not functioning properly in this area. And Public Works has done kind of a proactive inspection of these facilities around the city, and for the ones that aren't working, they have reached out to the property owners that are responsible for maintenance, and told them that something needs to be fixed. The, before Navigate can build on Lot 1, they're going to have to be able to provide stormwater management in some way, either on that lot, if they want to connect to the existing system, that existing system would need to be fixed.
And so that whatever they do would be approved by the city engineer?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. Because we're not engineers.
So do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, the stormwater management easement was established with the first phase, you know, Highlander First Edition. So this obligation is of public record. It should show up in your abstract when you purchase. So this obligation is of public record. It should show up in your abstract when you purchase the property. It has always been the owner's obligation. You know, who the owner is has kind of changed through the years, right? But when it was first platted, it said the owner will construct this detention facility in accordance with plans approved by the city. And they had the ability to pass that on to an owners' association. That is what they did here. That has been the nature of that relationship since the first edition was established. With each subsequent plat, it has, you know, remained on the land, but essentially that language has remained the same in all the various subdividers agreements. And that would continue with this fifth edition plat. It would essentially say, if you want a building permit on Lot One, you have to demonstrate that that facility is functioning as it was originally designed. You know, but that being said, the obligation does run with the, all those other phases of the, of the development as, you know, unless they've been re-subdivided. You know, it hasn't gone away, is what I'm saying.
So as far as us commissioners are, are concerned, our, our responsibility is determine if this preliminary and final plat complies with city code and that the stormwater management issue will subsequently be approved by the city engineer. Because we're not engineers, so we shouldn't get involved in these engineering issues. And that's our responsibility, not these other accessory issues.
Right.
Okay.
Not to mediate the interpersonal conflicts or disagreements among the owners out there, so.
All right.
I would comment that we've heard this before.
Yeah, it's not uncommon.
And we've talked about that, this issue of a developer develops a piece of land commercially, residentially, whatever, and then walks away giving responsibility, obviously legal responsibility, to a group that either has no idea they had the responsibility or really, they don't care, or they're willing to do their part, but no one else is willing to do theirs. It's a mess. And I don't know what we can do to have some input to the city to fix the mess, but it's, I have, I have sympathy for everybody but the developer. But the law is the law, and if you have the legal responsibility, then you accepted it. But it's a mess.
This seems to be a reoccurring problem with homeowners' associations.
Right.
When the developer creates an area and they're responsible, given the HOA.
Doing.
It's a, and the problem is what it is, but again, it's outside, I presume, of our purview. It's what the law says.
Right. I just had to vent a little.
Yeah. But I would just want everybody to know this is not an uncommon issue.
Right.
So, any further discussion by members of the commission? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of approving this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved 5 to 0. Item number six, presentation and discussion of the 2023 Iowa City Residential Development Analysis. Ann.
Thank you, Chair. So every calendar year, urban planning staff does an analysis of residential development that occurred within 2023. Not necessarily occurred, but built, but we look at final plats, we look at building permits and other things to kind of track as to whether residential development activity is keeping pace with residential needs in Iowa City. So I just wanted to go over some of the key takeaways from the analysis and then go through some of the charts and maps that were included in the report in your packet. So in 2023, 2023 had more subdivision activity than the past few years, but single-family lot creation is still low compared to historic trends. And this is especially true when you don't include the manufactured housing units that were approved with the Iowa River Mobile Home Park. This was, I think, a rezoning that came to the commission. And then they final platted that piece of property that ended up allowing 35 new single-family homes. In addition, most of the new multifamily capacity is due to the river, the West Riverfront redevelopment project on the corner of Myrtle and Riverside. The next takeaway is that the total number of dwelling units permitted exceeded 10-year trends, but single-family permits are still at an all-time low. In addition, the number of dwelling units demolished was a little elevated in 2023. And most of that was due to the redevelopment, again, of this Myrtle and Riverside project, which resulted in the demolition of 109 units. We also took a look at kind of what's going on in the University Impact area this year. And it was also higher. Development activity in that area was higher. But again, a lot of it is due to this West Riverfront redevelopment, which is in the University Impact area. Other than that, the trend that we're seeing in the University Impact area is conversion of duplexes to single-family homes. We looked at the supply of vacant lots, and that has increased since 2022, though several subdivisions still do not have infrastructure in place, but that should improve in the coming years. And then lastly, if permitting trends from 2020 and 2023 continue, the city is expected to only meet 75% of its demand for new housing by 2030. And that's a deficit of over 1,000 dwelling units. So let, let's look at final plat activity first. So more lots were created in 2023 than is typical, but recent trends, again, in single-family lot creation is low. So this, this chart here is the anticipated dwelling units based on lots platted. So you can see, single-family detached is down from a 10-year average of 109. Duplexes is actually up, and that's probably in large part due to the, the plat on the west side of the city. And I can't think of the name right now, off of Camp Cardinal Boulevard, that platted a lot of duplex lots. And then multifamily, that's up again because of this West Riverfront final plat, which had almost 300 units.
Ann, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
It seems to me that what we want is more duplex and multifamily in order to read, you know, meet the need. The single family
Yeah.
takes up a whole lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it may be, it may be a shift too in like people's, the, the price point that people need, you know, it's harder to purchase a single-family home, so maybe there's fewer. Maybe there's more of a need for smaller duplex attached, single-family type uses. That, I mean, that's what, that's what the data shows, is that we're seeing more, definitely more multifamily and fewer single-family. And this, this is just a chart, again, to show, this is anticipated dwelling units by lots platted, showing 2014 to 2023. So to your point, and the yellow is single-family. So in 2014, 15, 16, a lot of single-family lots platted. In 2023, it's a lot less. And a lot of these are attributed to, again, that manufactured housing park, those 35 units. And then all of this is multifamily. So it's, it's kind of shifting. And again, this, this, this huge jump in multifamily is again attributed to that West Riverfront redevelopment, which you typically wouldn't see in final plat data, because most redevelopment doesn't require a final plat. Most of the development, riverfront crossings. But the, the West Riverfront did require a final plat, so that's why you see it in this final plat data. Here's the map that just shows the, the plats from 2014 to 2022 with the hatching. And then the ones from last year are kind of outlined in blue. So this is the manufactured housing park, final plat off of McColster here. Again, West Riverfront, that redevelopment on Myrtle and Riverside. The one, the plat that had several duplex lots is Cardinal Heights Part One and Two over off Camp Cardinal Boulevard.
And what about that development that looks huge to me and it's not open until this fall? It's on, would it be Dubuque Street?
South Dubuque, yes.
Oh, Gilbane. Huge too.
Yeah.
Is that included in this?
I think that was permitted in 2022, so it was included in that data. But yeah, it's under construction now.
Yeah.
Was that platted, though?
No.
So that might be why it's not showing up on this.
Yeah, I guess it wouldn't be in our building permit data either, I don't think. Yeah. And I think that's the next thing I wanted to talk about. It's just new dwelling units based on building permits issued. So again, the, the total number of units permitted in 2023 is above recent averages. And it's almost exclusively due to multifamily units, which you can see here. And again, permits for a single family are down. We added accessory dwelling units this year, so we're going to try to keep track of that moving forward. The numbers aren't great, so it'll be interesting to see if the changes we made to the zoning code will result in more accessory dwelling units, so. And then here's a map that just shows building and demolition permits. The ones from 2023 are kind of hard to see here, but they're highlighted in kind of a black outline. So you see kind of that activity in this area, again, all the demolition activity and the redevelopment activity for that West Riverfront project. For the University Impact area, again, the West Riverfront project was the main thing that happened in the University Impact area. Other than that, there were three building permits for a single-family detached homes, one accessory dwelling unit, three duplexes converted to single-family, and then one commercial building converted to a duplex use. This, this conversion from duplex to single-family is something we talked about a lot last year when we were going through those text amendments and we were looking at data and kind of trends and permit activity, especially for duplexes. And the interesting thing we're finding is that in areas where duplexes aren't allowed, we're not singing, seeing single-family to duplex conversion. We're seeing duplex to single-family conversion. So this map here is the University Impact area outlined in pink. And then the riverfront crossings area is in green. So you can see, again, West Riverfront right here. This little kind of spot of demolition activity is attributed to some homes that Johnson County actually demolished recently. We also looked at the city's vacant lot supply, so we did a build-out analysis of vacant lots supply to estimate how long it would take for the current number of vacant buildable lots to be developed based on the 10-year average of building permits issued by type. So we currently have about two and a half year, 2.3 years of vacant single-family lots, 4.7 of attached single-family, and then 1.6 years for both duplex and multifamily. The anticipated build-out timeframe for vacant single-family lots actually increased from 2022. And this is due to the low building permit numbers that we saw in '23.
Ann, does that include lots that have been out in inventory for a while? Like, let's say there's an empty lot that hasn't been built on for the past five years. That's kind of infill lot versus a new lot. Is that excluded from this data, or is that a part of the?
It includes both. It includes newly created and infill vacant lots. It doesn't include the lots that were created that don't have infrastructure.
How about the lots associated with, I mean, it's all multifamily housing, but with the development across from the fire station off Dodge Street?
Yeah.
I mean, are they in this count?
They are in this count. They are in the, the plating count for,
Should have paid more attention.
Timber Valley Run. So this was like, I think, nine attached single-family lots platted and eight multifamily units.
That sounds like there was townhouses and then.
So the last thing that we looked at was kind of projected need, housing need versus projected development. And this chart here is shown in dwelling units. So one of the most important things that we do in planning is we need to accommodate new residential growth. It's a fundamental aspect of planning for the future of Iowa City. So we compared, again, projected need to projected development. And what we're seeing here, again, this is dwelling units, the need for dwelling units by 2030 is 4,610 new units. And the projected amount that we can accommodate at this point is 3,550 new units. So we're deficient about just over 1,000, 1,000 units. So again, back to that main point is that we can only accommodate 77% of our projected demand at this point. So just kind of some, some takeaways. Lack of supply can lead to increased competition for limited supply of residential lots and housing, which can increase cost. And lack of supply can also push development to other nearby communities, which can cause homes to be further away from employment centers. So it's, it's important to continue to encourage residential growth in areas where it's appropriate, these infill sites like the 1310 Cedar Street that you saw tonight. And in some of our designated growth areas at the fringe of the community where we anticipate annexing land for future development. So that's all I have. I'll turn it back to you all.
Did any of the changes that were made in the code, I'm not sure that's the right word, but this, just recently, do they expand the ability of single-family lots to be duplex lots now?
Yeah, they could be platted as duplex or single-family. Yeah. And especially for the mid-block ones.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the status certainly shows that there's a challenge placed to the commission and to the city council to get new development to occur for housing and sort of looks like that annexation that was not approved several years ago by council was a mistake. We've, we've got to have developable areas. I mean, they can't create themselves. If you have a deficit of 1,000 units, that means supplies, I mean, demand's going to greatly outstrip supply, which means costs of housing are going to proportionally or not proportionally increase. And I think it, no one ever wants development if you live in that neighborhood, but maybe it shows us that we have to be advocates for development, because this 1,000-unit deficit is not going to solve itself.
There is also an infrastructure issue, I think, that infrastructure, I mean, everything is so expensive now. Someone told me what a lot is going to be going for in that Monument Hills. And I just, I just about, I, I was speechless. Imagine that. I, I thought, oh my God. And then, you know, I, I live on that side of town, so I've driven by there. I mean, I can only imagine what it costs them to put in all that infrastructure. The roads and the sewers and the stormwater work and the, you know, all, getting all the utilities in there. It just, it costs so much for that infrastructure. But I think it's interesting to see, having been in Iowa City for decades and lived on the east side of town the entire time I was here. You know, when you see something that takes a decade or more to get done, like Scott Boulevard, and it's just chugging away year after year of trying to get that road built and connected, and then finally it gets done, and then you see development around it, and that's what it takes. And it, and I thought back to when we had several issues related to the west side of town and talking about 965 coming down at some point in time. I mean, I would think that that would lead to some development on the west side. And it, what's the timing on things like that? Do we have, I mean, do we have, do, I mean, it's, every issue is unique in its own way, but it seems like that infrastructure but it seems like that infrastructure is pretty vital, at least the major part of it, to particularly single-family housing. 965?
Yes.
Yeah, 965, that alignment is actually just east of where the landfill is, so that's in unincorporated Johnson County. That might be in our unfunded capital improvement plan, but there's, there is no development out there at this point, and even the area to the east doesn't have sanitary sewer capabilities. So it's going to be a long time before that area develops and that, that road is built.
What about that development that had Oak Knoll and a potential school out there behind Menards?
Carson.
The Carson farm?
Yeah. Some of that land is currently for sale. Yeah, we call it Carson Farms. Oak Knoll owns land out there. They can't annex, though, because they're not adjacent to the city, I don't think. So we anticipate probably development coming from the north off of Rarit, south first. But yeah, I'm not sure. That's where we adopted that new form-based code.
But that can't happen because that annexation wasn't approved.
Oh, then, yeah, they would need to apply for an annexation and a rezoning and subdivision and, yeah, all of that, but, yeah.
That's what I was referencing.
Oh.
So.
Wow.
So where is the land that can be developed, particularly for housing, that isn't?
Well, I guess these show the platted residential lots. So there's potential in Monument Hills, which you were just talking about. Tamarack, this area here off of Scott, most of that is, it's, it's, most of it's built, but there's still, I think, a little bit of development potential. Where else? Out here on Camp Cardinal Boulevard, talking about lots that have been, or plats that have been approved but no infrastructure, that, that would allow for many duplex units and some multifamily as well, but the street needs to be built and the utilities need to be built. There's still some potential out in this area too, off of Preston Lane, but there's, there's some construction going on there right now. There's still some vacant lots in Churchill Meadows, and that plat was approved quite a while ago, before I started with the city. Further south, I think it's called Sycamore.
Yeah, out by the Sacker Field.
No, which one am I looking for? There was a plat, and I, I'm not sure I can identify it on this map here, that was approved years ago, and they just started putting in the infrastructure. And so that would allow for some attached single-family and single-family, but
Is that north of the Sand Hill Estates?
Is that Saddle Brook?
I thought it was Sycamore, it's off of Whispering Meadows.
I think that's Saddle Brook.
Okay. I don't see it on here, but
It's kind of in that area, I think.
Somewhere in here. But yeah, so that was platted years ago, but they're now putting in the infrastructure. So now we have some, hopefully we'll see some building permits in that area.
What happens when something, okay, the Mayflower, for instance, the university, I understand they're going to hold on to that building for at least another year, but when that comes private, do we then just, I don't know how many units are in there, 100, more than that? Then do we ever see those numbers come into these numbers?
Well, we have to rezonate first, it's public right now.
Yeah. We'd probably see it through the building permit data, because we're looking at subdivisions and building permits, and then we're also looking at vacant lots. So we're kind of looking at a lot of different things. We're looking at the potential with the platted lots, there's nothing built there yet, but there's a potential for a new, new unit. With the building permits, it's like someone got a permit to build 300 units or whatever, right? It might not be under construction yet, but, so I think that's where it would show up.
And that whole Forest View area is still open? The available signs are still up?
Yeah.
Anything else, Ann?
No, that's, that's it.
Any more questions for Ann on that presentation?
Thank you.
It's pretty sobering, actually. Actually, I was kind of depressed. Ann, is there ever, I'm guessing we never have this data available, that breaks those down by ownership type, you know, kind of like Riverfront is going to be rental versus actually ownership?
Yeah, I guess we would have to look at rental permit data and kind of cross addresses with, with that.
So with all this, this building going on and everything becoming more and more expensive, where are we on affordable housing?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think part of the reason we want to do this is, and share this data, is to show we're not meeting demand. We need more housing, there's not a lot of building activity going on. We, we need to see more housing, and that doesn't mean that the new housing is going to be income-restricted to people at 40% AMI. But we need to look at, we can't just look at providing income-restricted units. It has to be multiple things that we're doing, providing financial assistance for income-restricted housing, making sure that we're getting a diversity of housing types and that we're, our regulations aren't a barrier to building more housing. So it's, there's no silver bullet, but I think we're trying to approach it in multiple different ways.
The frightening point for me the other day, watching Good Morning American, of course, you never know how much is really true, but it's almost more efficient to rent than to buy right now with the interest rates so high. So that's frightening. That's, that's frightening.
Yeah.
All right.
It's just, it's so expensive.
Yes.
As I said.
Everything.
Okay, we'll go on to item number seven, consideration of meeting minutes from February 21, 2024. Are there any major additions or corrections anybody would like to note? And if not, could we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion by Elliot, is her second. Second by Chad Wade. Your bet. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the minutes are approved 5-0. Number eight, planning and zoning information, Ann.
I sent an email out today about the planning consult, I think I've heard back from all of you, so just mark your calendars if you are able to make it for 4 o'clock on the 16th, for the Bloomington Street landmark rezoning.
And is there formal meeting after that?
Yeah.
Where they will talk about, open that public hearing again?
It's, it's, it's open, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The public hearing will, is remaining open. It'll be on the formal agenda. And I guess the other thing too is the, if you remember the CI 1 to CC 2 rezoning, the city-initiated rezoning for the properties in South Gate, that was approved by council last night.
Very good. Anything else, Ann?
Nope.
Anything by members of the commission on P&amp;Z information?
I have to tell a quick Oakdale Boulevard story and how hard it is for old people like me to, it doesn't get out much. So it's all because when I opened this packet and I saw Oakdale Boulevard there, I went, oh my God, it's everywhere. I had to deliver something to someone who lives in Tiffin, North Tiffin, in a brand-new condo up there in North Tiffin, and I just, I don't have navigation in my car. I pulled up my, the map on my phone, I look at it, and just a couple streets down from where I had to go and turn to get to her house, there was Oakdale Boulevard there. And I thought, well, I know where Oakdale Boulevard is, I just went up to Buke and turned and went on Oakdale Boulevard, and suddenly I am in this construction zone, and there's nowhere else to go. And I had to turn around and go back another way, and sure enough, when I got to her house, there was Oakdale Boulevard over there. There's just a big giant hole in it between, to get it over 965.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, there's a lot of streets.
So there's Oakdale Boulevard over there, there's Oakdale Boulevard over there, and then I opened this up and I went, Oakdale Boulevard? No way.
I think you can see your tire tracks in the aerial photograph.
You drive through wet concrete.
I did not drive through wet concrete, but it was pretty rainy that day, and there's probably some mud stuff on my car.
You can just say I'm an old woman.
Thank God it wasn't dark.
Anything else, folks? Seeing none, a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend is their second.
Second.
Second by Craig. Discussion? All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion is approved 5-0. We're adjourned.